We want to make sure that we're providing you information that you need to make decisions and be informed. So if there's any follow-up that you need after all of this that we provide to you today, please ask. We're here to try to help you. I wanted to touch just a little bit on our people. So I am backed by a tremendous team. Our assistant city engineer, Emily Hiddle, she can't be here with us today. She's on leave still. But she is just a brilliant, brilliant engineer, very detail orientated. And our project manager, Jesse Hoffert, and his staff help manage all of our field construction projects here at the City of Minot. They do a tremendous job. And with me here today is Stefan Jurz, our traffic engineer. Stefan, hands down, one of the best traffic engineers in the state of North Dakota, probably in the upper Midwest. We are blessed to have him at the City of Minot. If you've ever talked with him, he's just a wealth of knowledge when it comes to traffic engineering. So two tremendous assets for us to have at the City of Minot. I like to think of the engineering department as the city's think tank. We hire problem solvers. That's what we do as engineers. That's how we're trained. That's how we think. And that's how I would like the council and management staff to think of us. And that's really our mission. That's how we set the bar in our department is the problem solvers for the city. The next slides that I'm going to go through with you all are really some hot-button issues that we're trying to troubleshoot here at the city. And it's really ties back to the community survey results. So the citizens of Minot wanted, from what we've seen, wanted us to focus on additional pavement markings, signal management, and traffic flow, pavements and sidewalks. So all the other items within our department budgets and traffic engineering services, all those line items really come back to feed into these major topics. So, you know, staff salaries and benefits, obviously, for our people, but things like software and training and all those things really come back to help with these initiatives. So when I go through these slides, know that all that stuff is there, but it really feeds into trying to solve some of these issues. So within the traffic department, which Stefan's group manages, our pavement markings, we stripe about 150 miles of pavement markings within the City of Minot. You can see them here on this map, which is all sorts of different types, from paint all the way up to what we call tape, which is basically like a flexible tape that gets grooved and glued into the pavement. Each has different lifespans. When I started here about 15 years ago, we did almost everything exclusively with paint. They'd come in and they'd stripe twice a year, spring and fall, because it would wear off so quick. And by springtime, you know, with pavement maintenance and winter plowing, there was really nothing left. So we've almost gotten away from that, not only because of price, but just because of quality. And we've gone almost exclusively now to epoxy paint where we can. Higher cost, but you get a better product. So you can see us try to transition away from that. But one of the issues that we're having is we're barely making it through our long lines with the budget that we have. We spend approximately, right now, $230,000 within the traffic budget, but that's also supplemented by our street construction budget. So last year, as a, for instance, we probably spent close to about $900,000 total in pavement markings within the city. As a, for instance, if we mill off, excuse me, if we mill off pavement with a milling overlay project, the street improvement project will restripe that roadway. That's part of the project budget for that. It doesn't come out of the traffic budget. So what we're trying to do is, over time, we need to increase the traffic striping budget to try to account for the cost of inflation. And we need to get back to these things, where we're striping arrows, stop bars, and crosswalks, because this is the area that we're really falling short. We're just getting by with striping our long lines, but we're not getting to these things. And I think the public's starting to notice that, and they're asking for more service in those areas. With the calculations that we've done, we probably need to go from about $230,000 to about $300,000 to start meeting that threshold. So we need to start either ratcheting up to that or getting up to that number as soon as we can to start making an impact to meet the expectation that's being requested. Traffic signal upgrades, we made in the last several years a tremendous impact on getting our signals upgraded. You can see in the pictures here, some of our equipment. In the lower corner there, that's actually a picture from 2012 Easter weekend. I don't know if all of you remember, but we actually had a signal tip over and fall across 16th Street. Luckily, I think it was Easter Sunday, so everyone was at home. But if this would have happened at 5:00 on a Tuesday, we could have had a serious issue. This prompted us to start a signal management program, where we commissioned a study to do non-destructive testing on all of our signals, to get a baseline condition assessment on, you know, condition of these signal poles. They were ranked, they're categorized, and then we started doing traffic signal replacements. We really had no program before that, which was surprising to me. So we started doing a capital improvement plan essentially for signals. So that was step one, is to start to replace the actual structure. Step two in this process is then to start replacing the actual components within these cabinets. If you think of traffic signals, they're basically, you know, the structure itself, and then they're ran by a computer, just like your home computer, except a lot bigger. And some of these computers that are running these traffic signals are almost 30 years old. And you would never have a 30-year-old home computer. And so that's the technology that we're running on some of these signals. And so there's no wonder why we can't get some of these to program and run traffic efficiently. So over time, we've been trying to replace this equipment, and we've spent a lot of money to do that. And now we're to the point where, last year, we've implemented a system called Sentrax, and I'll get to that in a second. Let me finish this point here first. You can see in the signal capital improvement plan here, some of the signal projects that we have coming up here in the next few years. We have, obviously, Burdick and Broadway that's being replaced right now. We have South Broadway and 16th Avenue that'll start here soon. And we have some controller and video upgrades that'll be happening here soon on a couple other Broadway intersections. But then you'll notice, a little bit later in the next couple of years, we're pairing these signal replacements and upgrades with projects that we're programming with NDOT. And the reason why we're doing that is because federal funds can be used to replace these signals at 80% or 90% federal funding. So wherever possible, we're going to use someone else's money to replace these signals instead of 100% our own money. And so we may have to be patient and wait a couple of years, but wherever possible, we're going to use those federal funds because it's federal eligible. Now that we have several of our signals upgraded, we're able to program them by running a fiber-optic cable through SRT's network into these signals. And we can run that data back to the Public Works Building and plug that into a program called Sentrax. And it's basically a signal management program that allows us to pull real-time data from those traffic signals. So we're always taking real-time counts, and we can do data analysis constantly on this. And that helps us to develop signal timing plans. And instead of doing like a, well, you know, in the, back in the old days, I guess you could say, we used to have like a, well, from 8:00 to noon, we're going to have this plan, and from noon to 3:00, we'll have this plan, and then from 3:00 to whatever, we'll have this plan. Now we can actually have plans that run from, in 15-minute cycles if we needed to. And we can be very responsive to the different traffic patterns that we have in different corridors. And here's a snippet of a timing plan that we have on, I think this is Burdick Expressway. And so we're able to respond to traffic much more quickly, and we can analyze that data as it comes in and out of the system. You'll see this little snippet up in the corner. Obviously, the goal is to have your arrivals on green, right? When you get to the signal, you want it to turn green. We want the averages, 80 to, or, excuse me, 60, 80% arrival on green is considered good. Minot's average, based on the data that we're getting back from the system, is at 88%. Now, the public is telling us that our traffic is not good in this town. So there's a disconnect somewhere that we have to figure out, why their perception is that we're having issues on our corridors. So we have to do some more data analysis on that. But I think the data that we're getting back from the system is telling us that we're doing pretty good. I think there's some areas and pockets in town where we have some issues. We have some signals on the south end of Broadway that are not coordinated into that system yet. And we have some isolated signals that are off the system, if you will. They're isolated signals, like at 25th Street and 4th Avenue, for instance. It's a lone signal on its own. We don't have data to that one yet. That signal probably has to go, be replaced anyway. But anyway, so we have some work to do, but I think we're making good progress. Sidewalk improvements. Public is asking for additional sidewalk improvements. This is a snippet here, this picture, out of our, one of the plans that we created. This is one quadrant of an intersection. You can see how complicated these ADA improvements get in a hurry. This probably took one of my engineers, I would say, a better part of three days or more to design. They get very complicated very fast, although they are quite a challenge. So our engineers like to do these because if you've gone to school for engineering, this'll test your math skills in a hurry. So kind of something fun. But we did develop a new GIS tool here. I'm going to pull this up. You've probably seen this in the news here recently as well. City of Bismarck has developed something similar. But one thing that we wanted to do, we have a complaint tool already for, if you have a damaged piece of sidewalk through the City of Minot's app, you can report that. We'll go out and inspect it and then add that to our sidewalk repair list. But one thing that we wanted information from the public back on is, if we're missing sidewalks somewhere in the city, or if the public wanted us to do a ramp improvement project somewhere, where would you like to see that improvement be made? We have a lot of area that we have to cover within the city, and we think we have priority areas, but we'd like some public feedback on where the public would like to see some of these improvements done. So by simply putting this tool out, the public can go to this. It's free. We put it on the website. You can type in your address. If you're on your phone, you can geolocate. The map here, in red is areas where we have missing sidewalk, green has sidewalks, so you can kind of see some of the trouble areas that we have in Minot. You can type in location description, you can drop a...
Are we supposed to be seeing this lens?
We're stuck on...
You're doing a great job of describing it, though.
Okay. He tried to...
It might just be the way his monitor is showing on his laptop.
Yeah, probably.
You might need to do like a...
I don't know how to switch screens.
Try like the Windows button and... And then the D. I like it the same time. What did you do to get it? Thought it was Windows D, but I'm wrong. Far the head of the IT department.
That's not saying much. I don't know where it's at. Pull up this website. You're getting my bald spot.
She was trying a different way. She was going to camera your computer.
Let her do it here.
I'm not sure how to fix that problem, but if you want to set to the side, I can show the team screen there and just camera your screen.
So you can type in your location description. You can drop an image or take a photo if you want. You can check the box on what improvements needed, whether it's a sidewalk construction or crossing or both. You can tell us why this location is in need of an improvement, any additional information you want to get us. And then you can also select if you want to be contacted. So want to be contacted by phone or email, or if you're like me, you just want to report something and you don't want to be bothered by the city, just hit, "Please do not contact me." And then put in your phone and email address, hit submit. What happens after that is it's then submitted to the City of Minot, it goes into a database, and then we're able to analyze that data and find out where some of these improvements are being requested. So we might have a neighborhood that, maybe that there's a lot of missing sidewalks. You know, we've seen this where developments go in, and maybe there's a parcel or two that is undeveloped, and they need a link or two of sidewalk to connect a neighborhood. Or maybe there's a high volume of people with disabilities, and they really need a couple of ramps to make some connections. Well, we don't know that, but the neighborhood knows that. And so by us having that data, we might be able to focus our sidewalk improvement dollars to that neighborhood that needs it. So that's really the goal of this tool, and something that we want to unveil to the public, and something that I think would really be helpful to them. And it's something that, hopefully, if successful, we could use to develop additional tools. Lost my mouse. We're back. Which is segue into some pavement management. So you all know I like to talk about pavements. So we'll get into this a little bit. It's one of the main things that our department does is pavement management. So for those that don't know much about pavement management, basically what this is, is we're allocating limited pavement budgets in the most cost-effective manner. So I like to equate pavement management to car maintenance. We all understand that you need to do oil changes and rotate tires and do those sort of things to keep your very high-valued vehicle in top maintenance so that it doesn't fall apart. If you don't do the oil changes, your transmission fails, which is a costly repair. If you don't fix the transmission, then your engine dies, and then you got to get a new car. And pavements are the same thing. If you don't do your required chip seals and micro surfaces and patches and crack seals, then we get into these expensive milling overlays. If we don't do those, and then you got to do pavement replacements. So for some Minot statistics, these chip seals are costing us about $7 a square yard. And if we had to get into the milling overlay category, excuse me, that's about an 8X, that's $53 a square yard. And then a major rehab, so if we got to peel the pavement off and do a cement stabilized base and then repave it, that's double that. That's $104 a square yard. So getting to those pavements early, getting them sealed, patched, crack sealed, we're well ahead of the curve if we can stay ahead of it. And stay up here in this green category with a pavement condition index or PCI, we want to keep them well above 75. That's our goal in the City of Minot. Some statistics about our pavements. We have about 41.4 million square feet of pavement that we manage. About 90% of that is asphalt pavements, about 37.5 million square feet. Overall, we have about 55% of our pavements are in good to very good condition. So we kind of have a tale of two cities, if you will. We have a majority of our city that was built, you know, you think about it, we really didn't have paved streets until probably about the early 1930s in Minot, and then to about the 1970s. So that was kind of the first tranche, if you will, of paved streets. And then we have kind of everything after that. So we have some really old pavements, and then we have some pretty new pavements that were built here in the last probably 15 years with some of the newer developments in Minot. So trying to manage these two very different groups of pavements can give us some challenges. So that's why you see kind of these two very different splits on the graph. This is the number that I'm really concerned about. 20% of our pavements are in this poor, this 40 to 65 PCI category. That's a tough number to manage. That's too high for a city of our size. We need some resources to try to manage this. It's common to have pavements in this category, but that's too high of a number. So how do we compare to some other cities within North Dakota? We're right in the mix. There's no one that's much higher, much lower than us. Everyone's about the same, upper 70s, lower 80s. You know, we're a little bit lower than some of our comparable cities, but not much. A couple PCI points, you're really not going to notice the difference. Everyone's arterial roadways are going to be about the same in PCI quality. That's where everyone's going to focus their pavement resources. You know, it's kind of the needs of the many theory. You're going to manage your resources on the arterials. That's where most people drive. It's the neighborhood streets that are going to suffer, because there's less traffic on there. That's pavement management. That's where you're going to put your dollars. Excuse me. Within the engineering department, the way that we manage pavements is we use a software called Paver. It's developed by the Army Corps of Engineers many, many years ago. And it's basically the standard bearer of software that consulting firms and cities like us use. It's very cost-effective software. Probably costs us, I think it's around $900 a year. And it's very, very model-based. We can put a lot of different variables in there, such as cost tables and things, and it can run all kinds of different scenarios. Matt King, one of my engineers, manages our database. This guy's a pavement guru. So if you ever want to sit down and talk different strategies or scenarios or whatnot, give me a call. We can sit down with Matt, and if you have different questions or things you want to run by him, be my guest. We can certainly set you up with that. So let me just walk you through a few of these. I think it's helpful to understand what some of these different terms mean and what some of these different scenarios mean, because it kind of gives you maybe an idea of what some of these different scenarios can do, and just helps you inform kind of why we've recommended some of the budget recommendations that we've come to. So unconstrained baseline, what that means is if we had all the contractors in the world, and they're parked outside right now, ready to go, and Mayor Ross had the big publisher's clearinghouse check, and he said, "Lance, how much money do you need?" And I told him $240 million, and he was going to write the check. That's how much money we would need to put all of our pavements to a PCI above our recommendation. At the end of the day, we'd have a 91.1 PCI. So we'd have good pavements, everything would be done. So that's the baseline. Okay? And then if we wanted to do a scenario at the end of 15 years, because we can't do it all in five, that number would be unrealistic. So we have to try to manage this in a timeframe that makes sense for the City of Minot. If we had a budget of $17 million in '20, '25, and we wanted to eliminate backlog, which City of Minot's current backlog is at 36%, so that is every street with a PCI of less than 75, that goes into a backlog. Then you'd need $17 million a year, plus $17 million plus inflation the year after that, and the year after that, so it escalates. Okay? So just keep that in mind. Then at the end of 15 years, you'd have a network PCI of 93, and have a backlog of 1. And then you ask, "Well, what's this cost difference?" Cost difference is basically the backlog cost that you're going to have between the baseline and the time it takes to do all that work. So there's a cost associated with the different improvements over time that you're going to have. So basically, it's a measure of how effective is this model? Is it a good strategy to use or not? So obviously, the lower this number, this cost consequence, the better the model is. Okay? Think of it like that. Backlog elimination with no preventative work, so that is if we go back, we say, "Okay, we're going to do all the milling overlays, we're going to do all the reconstructions, but we're not going to do any of the chip sealing or the preventative maintenance work. We're just going to go and do all the heavy lifting work." That's $19 million a year. This is your resultant backlog and PCI, but you'll notice here that cost consequence, because we're not doing that preventative maintenance work, that inches up pretty fast. You'll notice the numbers here on the PCI, the stabilization of ADP PCI, $14 million. Budget of $11 million. We take our backlog from 36 to 26, but notice here, your network PCI at the end of 15 years drops from, we're about 77 right now, we're going down to about 71. So we're actually losing about six points under this scenario. Worst first, which is, you know, never the scenario we're going to recommend. This is the, think of it like this, this is the, we're going to go on this cul-de-sac that has five houses on it. We're going to replace the road because they're the folks that are complaining the most. But Broadway, we're not going to do any work on Broadway because we got to do this road here first because it's worse than the PCI on Broadway. That's called worst first. Okay? I'll tell you, when I got to the City of Minot, that was the strategy we were under. It was worst first, and it was like that for decades. And so we would spend almost all of our resources on pavement management, fixing these streets that have completely blown up, and then we'd have no money left to do normal pavement maintenance, like chip seals and patching and some of those other things. So we would fix these streets that have completely fallen apart. We'd have no money left to do the normal maintenance. So then streets that were in decent condition would just completely deteriorate. So one of the first things we had to do is rethink our strategy and try to get away from this worst first. And it took some effort to do that. We were finally able to do that. We really started to turn around the condition in our streets, but it took a while to do that. And of course, working with you all, educating you on why we do this, and then getting the budget to where we needed to be, we really started to turn this ship around. And then the last scenario, of course, is the unconstrained or the stopgap. That's, hey, the city's really fallen on some hard times. We really don't have any dollars for street improvements, so the best case we can do is basically a really large patching contract for $1.5 million, and you'll see kind of what that gets you at the end of 15 years. So what's your recommendation? Well, my recommendation would be, we need to budget at least $11 million. And why 11? 11 recognizes that we probably don't have enough dollars to get us to where we need to be, which would be, my recommendation at a minimum, would be to try to get to this $14 million goal, right? Because even with an $11 million pavement budget, we still can't get off of our arterial and collector network and into the neighborhoods. $11 million will help us to get over the inflation that we've been seeing the last few years. That's why I put those inflation slides in the read-ahead that I have, because we've been paying dearly for concrete and asphalt price increases over the last few years. So that helps us overcome that issue that we've been seeing. It gets us a little bit closer to our goal of trying to get into these neighborhoods and rebuild some of these streets that have fallen into that backlog category. And you can see us trying to tick away at that over the years, because we've taken about 10% off of that backlog over a 15-year period at the end of this model run. But we're really not getting in there. So you're going to hear this from constituents when they say, "Well, you know, 10 years ago, I needed my street fixed," and they just keep coming in here and patching over and over and over again. Why don't they just get in here and fix it? Because we don't have enough money to get off of the Broadways and the 16th Streets and the 16th Avenues of the world to get into the neighborhoods, to really do the reconstructions like we need to. In order to do that, you're going to need at least that, probably that $14 million number. And to really make the difference that you need to get rid of the backlog, you got to go up to 17. And then sustain the inflation increases over time, according to the models that we have.
What's this year's budget?
I apologize?
What's this year's budget?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, and candidates, that's the information I have for you. So if you have any questions, we have an answer.
Do we have any questions, comments, questions for Lance? Lisa?
Thank you. So, you know, based on your presentation, chip seals are much more cost-effective. How long does a chip seal last?
Generally, three to five years. It depends on the level of traffic. So in a residential area, you can... So in a residential area, you can usually get about five years out of them, and a, like on a 16th street, they're usually good for, for three to four.
Okay, thank you.
We've been transitioning more to micro-surfacing on arterials because you'll get a better product that lasts longer on those.
Mark?
Lance, for, I know we've been through this before, but for those who may not know, because I, I think somebody recently asserted that, you know, we've got this $8 million, and we're just sort of throwing it at the road, so to speak, without prioritization and so forth. Can you explain the process for actually getting all this data and how you know what the condition of the pavement is where throughout the city?
Certainly. Every, every five, every five years, we, we hire a company, and they come through with a, with a van, it's full of sensors and lasers, and, and they drive every street in Minot, they drive arterials in two directions, residential streets in one direction, and they measure crack density, rutting, they take photos of the pavement, and now in arterials, we, we have a, a test they do, it's called a falling weight deflectometer, which they measure the, basically how good the roadbed is. All that data is fed into this model, and then we use that data to basically rate the condition, that gives you a baseline PCI or payment condition index. This is all ASTM certified data, so it's, it's not something that's voodoo science, it's, it's used across the entire planet, that's how they rate payments.
Thank you. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lance, you talk about, you know, $12 million, $14 million in, you know, additional funds, and, you know, additional funds for striping, how much of that goes towards additional manpower? Like, would you, you, would you need more people to carry out that work? We can give you more money, but if you don't have the people, so what, what, how much of that goes towards people, and how much of that goes towards actual just cost of the project?
This year, my staff, we were down, we were down two people, we hired one right at the end of our design cycle, we were able to design out about, it was about $10 and a half million of improvements, and we just, I mean, we just met our bid cycle, we didn't have any room to spare. Now we've hired one, we're still trying to hire an engineer, and recently here, now if you remember, we did hire consultants, we have them basically a, a service contract where if I needed assistance, we can go to market, and we could hire a consulting firm to help us design a project. But just keep in mind, if, if we go and do that, then, then that's dollars instead of going to pavement maintenance, I gotta pay a consultant to help us with that. So, you know, over time, I think if, if we're going to make the investment in streets, then eventually, we're going to need some staff engineers to, to help, because this, this problem isn't going to be solved overnight, right? I mean, if you look at in a, in a 15-year cycle, I don't think we're gonna get it done sooner than 15 years, being realistic here, well, that's half of someone's career at the city of Minot, to do this work. Now, if, if we're doing things right and we're growing the city, even after we solve this problem, this person or persons are going to grow into some other function at the city of Minot within the engineering department, we should be big enough in 15 years where they're going to be doing other things besides just pavement maintenance, so.
So my understanding correct, you, we have these positions that you would need, we have them funded, you just don't have them filled at this point?
I have one unfilled position.
Okay.
With one additional engineer, we should be able to easily crank out another few million dollars in work.
Okay. Another question. We talked, you, you showed, you, you touched on the 25th Street, 4th Avenue signal, and I remember, I think it was that one, I think it was the one by Jim Hill, maybe those signals really aren't warranted, and maybe this might be a Stefan question, are we looking to replace those, are we looking to upgrade those, are we looking to get rid of them and put four-way stop signs in? I mean, what's the future of those intersections, or are we better to leave them, and, and I mean, do they qualify for funding even, meet, meet the requirements?
Signal at 4th Avenue and, and 25th Street is, it's probably not gonna meet warrants. So we're, we're gonna have to look at a different alternative at that intersection, maybe an overhead hawk or something different that would, that would qualify. The intersection at, at Jim Hill, 4th, or excuse me, 6th.
11th.
6th Street and 11th Avenue, I believe that does meet one warrant, maybe two, we're still working on that one. The goal there is to hold off a few years, in the CIP, we do, there's a storm sewer project that we're looking at doing probably in '29, by that time, the, the water and sewer underneath 11th Avenue is shot, the pavement and the curb and gutter is not in good shape, it's probably a full reconstruction, so we've actually programmed funding within the CIP to rebuild that corridor, so that would be the timeline to probably put in a new traffic signal if it's warranted. We've also looked at some other improvements there as well, but we're a long ways from that project.
Okay. One, one final thing, when we talk about PCI points, can you give us some information as far as, show us kind of where we were a few years ago, obviously, we've tried to chip away at increasing the, the paving budget, can you show us kind of where our PCI was, you know, three, four, or five years ago, and give us kind of some history, just send something out, or?
We've, we've been kind of floating around this, around 80, 80, and then we've, we've dropped a little bit, we, we went up by a, a PCI point or two, but then we've, we've been kind of on this, this decline a little bit the last few years, which, which we predicted, right? Because we knew that this budget had to be probably in the teens of millions of dollars to really have the impact that we wanted, and we haven't gotten there, so we, we knew we were going to have a decrease over time, and we're seeing it.
Okay, thank you. Lance, when was the last PCI survey?
2022, so I think in '26 we're due for another one.
And, and when it comes to man, to, you know, striping, how much of that, or is it, is it mandated by either state or, or federal or construction, is that crosswalks or whatever we have to do, I mean, is that, I, is it a mandate?
I need to phone a friend on this one, Stefan, could you come up and help me with
Mayor Ross, members of council, that is a mandate, the, not necessarily the crosswalks and arrows, but the long line is, we are required to maintain a, what's it called, a minimum level of retro reflectivity, so that's kind of why we've been more focused down on our long line, make sure that's up to date every year, and with that, we sacrifice the crosswalks and arrows, so.
Thank you, that's what I, that's what I needed, thank you. Any other questions from council? Seeing none, how about candidates? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lance, you'd mentioned that we're starting to transition some of the chip seal stuff to micro-surfacing, what's, I, I didn't see on the, on the sheet, what's the cost of micro-surfacing per square foot?
It's approximately double the chip seal, so we're paying probably about $16 a, a square yard.
And what kind of a lifespan do you get out of that versus the chip seal?
It's five to seven.
Okay, so about double, roughly?
About double. Again, it kind of depends on, on your level of traffic, and, and really what you're trying to accomplish with the micros. Like, we'll use those on, on your birdics, on your 16 Streets where you're having a higher level of traffic. What micro surfaces are, are really geared towards is rut filling. So like, last year, we did a micro on Birdic Expressway and on 16th Street, because we're seeing a lot of rutting happen. So instead of doing an expensive milling overlay, we wanted to do something to take care of rutting and some of the larger cracks that we're seeing, but we didn't want to have the expense of the $50 some dollar a square yard to do the, the milling overlay. So in this situation, the, the best tool to use was the micro surface.
Okay, all right, that's all I had, thank you.
You bet. Mike?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Lance, a, a couple things quick, can you, can you talk a little bit about what the decision making process looks like for, for hiring an outside firm, and the example I've got right now is Apex with 16th Street, at what point is that something where, I mean, that's a big project, I mean, there's a lot of different partners, so maybe that's an obvious one, but where, how does the decision-making process work for you guys? Is it just a workload, is it, is it a size of project, how do you guys go about that?
Capital projects are always consulted out, so we have a, we go through a request for qualifications-based selection, we have a committee, it's usually made up of four staff and one city council member, we put out a, a solicitation, and we pick the most qualified firm, council selects that firm, and then we negotiate a scope and fee. So we do that for all capital. For internal projects like this, we follow the same process to develop a pool, and then we have, so in this case, we basically have all five or so local consulting firms, and then it's just, we kind of spread the workload out, you know, so Ackerman's done a project for us, Moore's gonna do a project for us, and then we, you know, Prairie's done some projects for us, it's just kind of who has some availability, and then we just kind of spread the workload out. And it's really then just a component of time, like easement acquisitions for some of these safer house of school projects, they take a tremendous amount of, of staff time to do, so that's an easy, an easy ask for us, we just say, hey, consultant, you handle this for us, and we do the design in-house.
Okay. And then, and that, that's maybe a decent segue with safer routes, but maybe more broadly, when you talk about, you know, whether it's 8 million, 11 million, 14, 17, whatever that looks like, how much of that right now would be going to sidewalk projects? And, and really what, I guess what I'm more interested in right now is, when we're looking at ramps at, at, you know, at streetways, it seems like from what you just said, we've got a lot of time going into design there, we've got a lot of effort going into that. So how much of that's mandated by law, if we're replacing an intersection, are we doing that by default? Or what are, what's some of the, the decision-making that's going into those?
Some is mandated by law, so if we're doing a micro surface, a milling overlay or a reconstruction, and there's sidewalks that are on that corridor, we are mandated by law to replace those, those ramps. So if they're non-compliant, we have to replace them. If we're doing patching, or we're doing a chip seal project, we don't have to. If there's some that are on the corridor, then it makes sense to do it, I mean, we have the budget funds available, then we will, but we don't have to. So it's situational.
Anything further? All right.